Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to the town of Starron Public Hearing Agenda. It's scheduled for 5:15, it's about 5:25 PM right now, we're a little bit late because of technical difficulties. So we apologize for that. I just wanted to read out this, for anyone who might want to call in to lodge a comment regarding the development. Any and all inquiries regarding this application, please call 1-855-453-6958. And the access code will be 617-1659. 617-1659. And please note, this is a virtual meeting due to the state of emergency declared by the prompt to no scope on March 22, 2020. So I'll call the meeting to order. And ask for any changes or additions to the agenda. If not, can I have a motion to approve it, please?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Pence, all those affairs, no saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most carried Nancy, thank you. So item three is the application for site plan approval, PQ Properties of 25 Bunker Hill developed a four-unit townhouse. Want to read off the correspondence received so far?
Yes, so we received a correspondence from Eddie Allard dated March 20, 2020. Town Council, to whom it may concern. I am writing to object to the planned apartments being built near my property. I don't believe there is enough space on the lot for the development or in the neighborhood for the increased traffic. We have all seen these apartments being built around the county in poorly chosen locations and destroying the comfort, looks, and values in their areas. Shouldn't there be more rules about where these developments can go? Please consider looking at this issue and making sure these types of projects can't just go into every empty space in town. This is also from George Ed Allard. I am writing to appeal the recent decision to allow a four-unit townhouse dwelling be placed at 2325 Bunker Hill, Stellerton. The lot sizes of 23 and 25 combined is less than 70 feet wide, which is not large enough to support two units this size. Also, parking will be an issue. In the recent past, requests to purchase said individual lots were rejected to place single dwelling bungalows or garages on. With residents' purchases being informed, the lot alone was too small to place a bungalow on. How now is it possible to place a four-unit townhouse okay? Most houses on Bunker Hill with the same lot size has only one house, which is what the town permitted. And that has been received via mail.
We also received, I think, as part of the package from another resident, Ken Brown.
Yes, that was part of Roland's memo, and I can certainly read that. I am sending this email to you to let you know, let you and anybody else know that I am totally against a four-unit building on two lots that's that just big enough for a small house. Why don't these people or these planning commissions make an area somewhere like vacant land and let these people that want to build in other people's backyard with these units that attract too many people and the trash and garbage that go with it? It's bad enough to live in a town that is scared of landlords to tell them and the people that live in them to clean up or tear them down. I have three of these units behind me and all I see is trash and garbage. The landlords don't care as all they are worried about is money. As an example of trash was a mattress that sat in the bushes, my hedge that runs along a fence that has nothing but trash in it around it that stayed there for over a year. And the man that owns them mowing the lawn every week and just leaves it there. If they want to build something on it, build a nice house like the ones beside it and sell it to get their money back. The lady that has a nice red home beside it, this will make her home worthless and these people don't care. Maybe we should buy land beside their places and make rentals and see what they think. This will most likely bring more younger, low-income people in the area to an area with a lot of older people that don't need any extra activities. I know there is most likely nothing that any of us can do when it comes to certain companies and politics in this town. But I, along with a lot of neighbors, don't want a building like this there. Thank you for your time, Ken Brown, 28 Kirk Avenue.
That's all the correspondence received?
From my, from my knowledge, yes. And I know that we do have someone on the, on the phone.
Would you like to speak?
Yep.
Paul, is there something you, you wanted to add?
Nothing he wants to add, okay.
Okay, how does council feel about it?
So let me ask a couple of questions, if I may. So, we're trying to determine if a four units is eligible to go into that lot, so. The resident, and how many, how many did we get, three or four?
You got two, you had two objections.
Two objections, okay.
Two objections, yes.
So Roland, from the two objections, both of them seem to be on the same page, saying that the lot is way too small. How is that?
Go ahead.
So, it, it does the lot abide by our bylaw for building a four unit?
Yes, it does, because what PQ Properties did, they actually purchased two properties and consolidated them to make one larger lot. So the causal is on, it actually measures a frontage of 67 and a half feet with a depth of about 120 feet.
Okay, so 67 and a half feet is acceptable from a bylaw perspective for a four unit, correct?
Well, for a townhouse by site plan approval, yes.
Okay. So the perception is this is too small, but it's according to the bylaw, it is not.
But you gotta remember, this is a site plan approval process, so that
Site plan, Simon. Site plan is the key word here.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's not an as-of-right development, because as-of-right in an R2 zone, you could only get up to two lots. However, if you go by site plan approval, the development officer can issue an approval for, as, up to as many as four through a site plan approval process. So this is what we're going through now, but because there were objections launched, that's why this appeal hearing is being held, because a couple of local residents appealed it.
Understood, but what I'm trying to figure out here is the residents are saying that the frontage is too small, so we're saying that it is almost 70 feet.
That's correct.
Okay, so 70 feet from a bylaw perspective, is that acceptable? I'm assuming it's acceptable because you were going to say yes to it if there wasn't for the two objection, correct?
That, that's correct, because the, the layout of the building is such that I see the lot itself goes between Bunker Hill and Rutherford Street. So two units would face Bunker Hill and two units would face Rutherford Street, and they have a common wall at, at the rear of the units.
So from, from one side is only two units, so theoretically, he could have done two duplexes if he wanted to.
Yeah, then the, the only thing is if they were separate buildings, he wouldn't be able to get the rear yard requirements of 20 feet between, because then you, about 40 feet between the two different units, one that would have faced Bunker Hill, one that faced Rutherford. But this way, he can get four units together as a townhouse with two facing Bunker Hill and two facing Rutherford.
Okay. So the other question is, did that neighborhood, how many other multi-unit residential buildings are there? Because I know there's a lot of duplexes in that area, isn't there?
You're right, there's, there's a lot of duplexes. I guess the only other multi-unit that's in the immediate area is also the one that that PQ Properties built a couple of years ago. They have, I believe it's 10 apartment units on top of the commercial space.
Okay, so we have a 10-apartment building, we have a lot of duplexes. So the majority of it are multi-unit residential, it's not a single dwelling.
Yeah, but that area mostly, yeah, there are single dwellings and there are also a lot of semi-detached duplex dwellings as well, so a lot of one and two-unit buildings.
Lot of two-unit, okay. So the reason I'm asking for it is I understand what the residents are asking for, but at the same time, you know, I'm against red tape. And, you know, when an opportunity comes up to our town to, to increase the tax base for our town and to create a brand-new structure, which by the way is gonna cost it's not gonna be cheap. And whoever's gonna rent is gonna not get rented for $300 or $400, it's gonna be a lot more expensive than that. And that's gonna be a next addition tax to our tax base. And I don't think you see a problem with it, to tell you the truth, especially that the majority of the residents in that area are multi-units. If the majority of the area was just single unit, single dwelling, then I can understand that reasoning. But because the majority of the houses around that area are multi-units, two duplexes, 10 units, I'm inclined to say yes. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
I wouldn't say the majority are duplex in that area. A lot of single dwellings, and the 10-unit one that Roland referred to is on Ford Street, the back of the the building there. So it's a little bit removed from that area.
I am I'm, uh, I'm not in favor of the development. I feel that we had neighbors in that area that lived there all their lives. They put up with a lot. And they're frustrated and they don't want a four-unit in their, in their backyard, and I can understand that. And I have to agree with the neighbors in that area.
I was down, I was down to see the complex, when Gary invited me to go down and look at the area. There was three, we did our, our spacing, he was in his vehicle and I was in mine. But we went down and there was three of the residents come out. And that area is a residential area, it's not highly apartments, there was duplexes there, but there was duplexes there years ago. And that area was an older area in town, some of the older houses have come down. They've started to re, reconstruct the area and it's become a nice area where they live. And to put a complex like that in there, if you look at the plot plan, you've got 15 feet on either side of the building to the side. And this here big complex in there is not, in my opinion, conducive to that area, and I, I'm not in favor of putting a four-unit there.
So let me ask you this, Counselor Pence and Counselor Knight. So following that logic, we are not going to approve almost any four-unit dwelling in the entirety of Stellerton, if somebody objects, because the majority, 99.9% of the dwelling in Stellerton are all a single dwelling or a duplex.
You're surmising that, Simon, surmising.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just reading between the lines, that's, that's
You're surmising.
We either have to be consistent in our approach or what we're doing right now is we're picking
No, I, I think it's case by case, Simon.
It's not Gary, Gary, please let me finish. So what I'm reading from this is you guys went down, talked to the residents and established that, you know, there's two objections or three objections. Now we're gonna say no to a new development in town, which means that I'm okay with that, if that's the case going forward, which means that in the future, there will be no four-unit development in Stellerton, because all of it applies would be the same. And if we want to apply this in this area, we're gonna apply it everywhere else. This is where I stand.
Okay, what about Counselor Campbell?
Well, I was down and I had a look at the area as well. I don't really think the area is big enough for four units. I did speak to a couple of people down there. And I, you know, I just feel that you'd be encroaching on, on the neighbors on either side to put a building of this size there, so. I'm not in agreement with the four unit.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like we have three against and one for. Do we take it to a vote?
We know we would just wait until it's going to the council agenda and that's where you will vote on it and debate. Right now, it's just to hear any appellants or any issues or, or comments that the public would have. Paige, is there anybody else on the phone that would like to speak? You're on mute, Paige, I don't know. No, we're good, okay, so there's no other, no other people, your worship, so.
Okay, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Pence, meeting adjourned. Do we want to move right into the counselor?
Yes.
Yeah, we might as well.
Okay. So welcome everybody to town of Starron, council meeting, May 11, 2020. Start time of 5:40 PM, delay slightly because of the public hearing beforehand. The agenda is in front of us, always, any additions or changes to the agenda?
Did I make a report on homecoming, please?
Sure, so maybe we'll put that as 5H? Homecoming report?
All right. Your worship, could I order or add Davy's Day ceremonies too, please?
Sure. Where do you want to put that on the agenda?
Right after Brian, I guess.
Okay, we'll put it under, under number five then.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna add a proclamation before business arrives to the minutes for World Lupus Day on May 10th, so that's gonna be, it's gonna be approved in minutes.
So moved, approved the amendments, Amanda?
Agenda first.
Agenda.
Sorry, approved, so moved, you approved the agenda?
Thank you.
Second the motion.
Moved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Pence, all those affairs, no saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most carried Nancy, thank you. The minutes are next, they administer electronic, they have part of the package, there's no errors or misses, if I have a motion, please.
So moved as written, your worship.
With the, with the amendments.
The amendments per the agenda, not the minutes.
Sorry.
Called the move by Counselor Pence, do we have a second there?
I'll say it.
Moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Counselor Campbell, all those affairs, no saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most carried Nancy, thank you. Next item is the World Lupus Day on May 10th. I want to read the proclamation. Whereas lupus is a global health problem that affects millions of young men, women, and children of all nationalities, races, ethnicities, genders, and ages worldwide. And whereas many physicians worldwide are unaware of symptoms and health effects of lupus, causing people with lupus to suffer for many years before they obtain a correct diagnosis and medical treatment. And whereas medical research efforts into lupus and the discovery and development of safer, more effective treatments for lupus patients are underfunded in comparison with diseases of similar magnitude and severity. And whereas people with lupus will face a lifetime of living with the unpredictable and life-changing health effects of this disease. And whereas there's a deep unmet need worldwide to educate, support individuals and families affected by lupus. And whereas there's an urgent need to increase awareness in communities worldwide of the devastating impact of lupus. Now therefore be resolved on May 10th, 2020, hereby designated as World Lupus Day, on which lupus organizations around the globe call for increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus. Target education programs for health professionals, patients in public, and worldwide recognition of lupus as a significant public health issue. So thank you for that, I have a motion to accept it, please.
So moved.
Seconder?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell, all those affairs, no saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, thank you very much. We'll move on to the presentation of the budgets, operation capital.
Brenda? So I hope we're not having tech, technical difficulties again. Yeah. Oh, I hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
And where am I speaking into? Thank you. So I'm on the phone and I'm on Paige's headset, so my apologies. Okay, we just, okay, so do I have your headset now? Okay, I've got Paige's headset, here we go. Technology, don't we love it?
Yes.
When it works.
Good. Okay, so about to present the budget, I am going to share my screen with you. Tell me if you can see it.
Yes.
Yes.
You can see it?
Yes.
Right here? Okay. So this is the general operating budget for April 1, 2020 to March 31, 2021. As you can see, we'll start up here at the top with the assessments. As you can see, our residential estate assessments are total of 183.355 million. Our commercial assessments are 85.386 million. With no change in the tax rate, being $1.82 residential and 4.15 commercial. That translates to 3.3 million for residential taxes and 3.5 million for commercial taxes, for a total of 6.88 million. So that's the tax piece of the budget, so I'm going to scroll down now. And to here. All right, so we're going to review, so this column was the budget for 1920. This is our projected actuals, we're not finished for 1920 at the moment. This is our projection and budget for 2021, this is the column I will be reviewing. First line is accessible property taxes, which is what we've just reviewed, residential, resource, and commercial for 6.88 million, a slight increase over the prior year. Special tax agreements for 29,000, that's alliant and heritage gas calculation based on revenue, similar to prior years. The de-transfer tax, that's money collected and immediately remitted, you'll see the offset. So you see the 60 up here and you'll see the 60 down here, so it comes in and it goes out. Last year was high in, but also high out, no net impact to the bottom line. Grants in lieu of taxes for 190,624, similar to prior years, slight increase. This is the post office, the RCMP, Department of Mines, and fire protection for NSCC, and the fire protection for NSCC has gone up with the changes in the building. Other revenue-owned sources, this is a line that we always budget conservatively, it does include interest. So obviously, in the current situation, we don't want to budget interest as high as maybe it has been in the past. This also includes dispatch services and record checks. Unconditional transfers, this is the equalization and the HST offset, both outside the control. Next line is conditional transfers, this includes our street crime unit funding, student funding, and our community works program, with a slight increase with the community works program. In conditional, meaning that we have to spend money to get money, unconditional, meaning we get it anyway. The internal transfers, 80,000 of that, or yeah, 81, 81.6 of that is transferred from the water utility and 15,000 is a transfer from operating reserve. For a total of 8.122 million in revenue, a slight decrease over the prior year. We move on to expenses, legislative services, which is council, at 111,000, slight increase over the prior year. Generally, we, the travel budget is budgeted at $1,000 per person, and generally, council does not use that full amount for travel. General government services at 835,000, the increase over the prior year here is for election costs, marketing and communications, the heritage plan, and insurance. Police protective services, the slight increase, although we have a slight increase over last year, very similar to the previous year budget, but the increase relates to a full-time police chief, as well as the contracted police officer increase. Fire protection of 486,000, that's lower not for operating costs, most of that decrease is the hydrant rental cost, which is a calculation based on prior year water actual expenses dictated by the UARB. Prior year water actual expenses are lower, therefore the hydrant rental fee is lower. That's the bulk of the reason for the difference between these two numbers. Transportation services at 8.8, so 1.851. This allows the increase from the prior year to this year, again, fairly similar budget year over year, but the actuals, we have a full-time engineering tech, there's the contracted increase. There's also an increase for insurance and for the sweeper truck. Environmental services, there's only a 1% increase for solid waste and Eric. The balance of the increases for the REN, Regional Economic Network. Recreation services is showing a decrease over the prior year, and this is for a change in structure. Cultural services, this includes our library and community center and deans. We are lower than the prior year, the prior year had about $14,000 for hazardous cleanup in the library, which we're not planning to repeat. Our financing costs have gone up considerably. In this amount is the additional debt for the snowplow and also a payout of an older debt. So there's a lump sum balloon payment in here that, that eliminates an older debt of the town for 702,000. Outside service providers for the town, this includes PBSC, the Wellness Center, Chad, Homecoming. We're at 338,000 budgeted, similar year over year. Outside service providers for the province at 917,000, this includes the school board corrections and the seniors' housing deficit. And our school costs go up because our, our uniform assessment has gone up. There's the transfer of the de-transfer tax, which offsets the revenue above. And no internal transfers anticipated for the current year, the prior year includes some capital that we purchased and a transfer of the balanced operating reserve. So overall, 8.122498 million of expenses to balance 8122498 of revenue. Any questions?
Thank you, Brenda. How much was the lump sum payment that we paid off for that loan?
We're paying 188,000 and about 30,000 of that we would have paid anyway, so about 125-ish is the lump sum amount.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brenda? Good hearing, I just say that I'd like to thank staff for the work they put into preparing this budget for council's review. We're very pleased the council be able to hold the tax rate again this year. Especially with, we're making that big lump sum payment, 125,000, still hold the tax, I think it's really good news, the not-so-good news, the, the revenue is kind of a flatline a little bit, but we have a break-even budget with no tax increase, so we're pleased we do that. We looking for a motion now?
We will do a resolution after the capital budget is presented.
Thank you.
I move that we accept the budget.
Okay, let me, let me continue on, I'll go on to the water utility first, maybe?
Yes.
We'll do it all in one motion.
Yeah, we'll do it all in one.
Okay.
Okay, so here is the water utility. So again, for the same period, April 1 to March 31, 2021. Again, the same format, the budget for 1920 projected and the budget for 2021. So overall metered revenue is consistent with prior years. Flat rate revenue also consistent with prior years. This fire protection, this is, this is the UARB calculation that we just talked about on, on the fire protection side in general. This is a revenue item that is dictated by a calculation with UARB, with this revenue comes from the town of Stellerton and the municipality of the county of Pittville. So the decrease there is simply because the expenses for the prior year are lower. Other is mainly interest, and again, we're going to be conservative for interest in the current circumstances. Operating expenditures, the sources apply this last year with the cleaning of the reservoirs. Power and pumping, we're, we're projecting an increase, this is to allow for repair and maintenance. We were relatively low on repair and maintenance and power and pumping last year, and we like to make sure there's enough room just in case. So most of that 191 increase difference is related to an increase for maintenance. Purification at 435,000, additional budget for chemicals and water testing. Transmission and distribution, 192,000, again, allowing for unexpected repair and maintenance on transmission and distribution lines. Admin in general, small increase in there, but it's insurance, it's audit, and it's advertising. Appreciation is a calculation based on asset base. And the property taxes are based on a no change in the tax rate for the town of Stellerton, these are property taxes paid to the general fund. And the property taxes are based on a no change in the tax rate for the town of Stellerton. These are property taxes paid to the general fund. Total of one point seven six nine of revenue to a total of one point four four two of expenditures. We also have a transfer from depreciation. This is an approved amount that comes out of the water depreciation to help fund this principal and interest. The interest and principal charges, as you can see, are starting to decline because the debt is going down. Overall, we have a transfer from surplus to balance to zero of one hundred and sixteen thousand. But the water utility does have an operating surplus at the end of March of two thousand and nineteen of one point six million. Any questions on the water utility? Okay, I'll keep going to the general capital fund budget. The general fund capital budget. One hundred thousand dollars for the town hall building detailed design. Twenty five for the library boiler, twelve thousand three point a wall of the town hall. Twelve thousand for fencing at the public works building. Ten thousand for the town hall bell alliance system. For infrastructure, thirty five thousand for the sanitary flow meter and structure. Twenty thousand for McMillan curb and sixteen thousand for the crosswalk lights at the A and W. Sidewalks, twenty one seven for cellar street from Acadia Avenue to Jubilee. Twenty thousand seven hundred Ford Street, Bridge Avenue to Foster. Eighty eight hundred on Acadia Avenue, South Florida, South McKay. Fifty six hundred for Ford Street, Fairview to Clermont. For recreation, work on the Pleasant Street Park for twenty seven thousand. Playground equipment at River Street for fifteen thousand. Public works equipment, the lawn tractor for twenty five. The Rundle Street, Victoria and Allen Avenue Infrastructure Renewal Project. This is subject to approved provincial funding. The sewer portion, which is a portion funded in the general fund of the project is six hundred and thirty seven eight fifty five. For a total of nine hundred and ninety one thousand, six fifty five per capital. How is this funded? Gas tax funding for three hundred and eighteen nine twenty eight. Peep cap funding, this is assumes were approved for provision funding of three hundred and eighteen nine twenty eight. Municipal Finance Court borrowing for a hundred thousand on the town hall building. And general capital reserve for the balance, two hundred and fifty two thousand, eight hundred. Any questions on general capital? I'll continue on to water capital. Water treatment plant membranes. This is three membranes to be replaced at one hundred and ninety five thousand. Completion of the commercial water meters, one hundred and fifty thousand. Completion of the East River Shore channeling. This was started last year. The design work was done last year and this year it's the construction for eighty five thousand. And again, the Rundle, Victoria and Allen Avenue project. This is now the water portion of the project for six hundred and sixty thousand, four sixty. For total capital of one million, nine thousand, four sixty. How is this funded? Water depreciation fund for seven hundred and sixty thousand, two thirty, subject to UARB approval. And the P cap funding for approved for three hundred and thirty two thirty. Any questions on water capital? And that's it.
Okay, so I'll do the resolution. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the town of Stellerton that the assessment for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is confirmed at eighty five million, three hundred and eighty six, three hundred for commercial. Further be it resolved that the assessment for residential is confirmed at one hundred and eighty three million, three hundred and fifty four, eight hundred. Further be it resolved that the tax rates for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one be approved at one eighty two for one hundred dollars of residential assessment. And four dollars and fifteen cents per one hundred dollars commercial assessment. Further be it resolved, as per the resolution passed by council on April fourteenth, twenty twenty regarding the waiving of interest due to COVID nineteen. Further be it resolved that the operating budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is approved at eight million, one hundred and twenty two, four ninety eight. And further be it resolved that the capital budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is approved at nine hundred and ninety one, six fifty five. If I can get.
I'll move, I'll move that resolution.
I'll second that.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by councillor, any further discussion? Okay, again, just like a thanks staff for their efforts here and all those affairs by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you very much. So I think we're ready to move on to item five. Five A is, or sorry, five is reports from staff. Five A is Chief Mark Holback, Stellon Police Service.
Thank you, worship, members of council. You have my report in front of you for the month of April. I really don't have too much to add to it. It was a very busy month for calls. I would say several of them COVID related, resulting in six, six charges under the acts and several warnings. If anybody has any questions for me.
Yeah, Merk, I had a call on the weekend. I, and I, you know, really, I couldn't answer the, I couldn't answer the person, but maybe you can help me answer. It was on an animal. They were worried about an animal being abused. And I didn't know, who do they call in a case like that?
In a case like that, we, they can contact us and we would have our animal control officer, John Filler, follow up. And he can, he can make that initial assessment and then involve us if required. But it can come through us initially, yes.
Thanks, Merk.
Chief, you said that there's a few calls about COVID nineteen related. Can you just expand a little bit on that?
Certainly. The calls, we had several calls, unanimous, anonymous calls of people in violation of the acts. They were followed up on by officers and many of them were unfounded due to the time lapse between the the occurrence and then the time it was called in. And several of them were related to some of the comments made by Dr. Strang in the media with recommendations for recommendations for citizens rather than strict adherence to the acts. So when those come in, for example, recommendation that you don't go for a drive on Sunday, that you you stay home because you may go to gas stations or have contact with people. That was a recommendation. That wasn't part of the act. So the calls we had on those were more of an education piece for the citizens calling in to refer to the provincial, provincial website for information about COVID related calls like that because they weren't really for us. They're not enforceable. It was more of just suggestions rather than the act. So those were a lot of the calls we had. I found that, you know, the officers, we started out with the education piece and then we moved to the enforcement. And honestly, there wasn't that much of a need for enforcement. I feel like the members of the citizens of the town were adhering to it. And I know most may have a story of where they may have seen some people together or maybe people in violation. But when we get the calls and follow up on them, they're either gone or we have.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Any further questions for the chief? I will note that we had a police commission meeting last Thursday where the police commission reviewed the same reports. So a lot of council is familiar with it already. No further questions, have a motion please.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Knight, second by deputy mayor Campbell, all those affairs by saying aye. Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you, chief. Five B, Emily Lutton, Building Official Fire Inspector.
Good evening, your worship and council. I have my report. We've been getting a little bit busier over the last month with permits and inspections, which is good. Do you have any questions about the report?
Council? I know we have one last outstanding order last month, so that's a good thing.
Yes.
Take care of a motion please.
So I'd move Emily's report as written, your worship.
I'll second it.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by councillor Knight, all those affairs by saying aye. Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Item five C is Roland Murek, Acting Plan and Development Officer. You're on mute, Roland.
Lost him.
He's on mute, there he is.
Okay. Yes, thank you, worship. I think, I think you all have my written report. I guess I'll just echo what Emily said a minute ago in that we are seeing a little bit of an uptick in terms of inquiries about permits. You know, not for new houses yet, but mostly for, you know, decks and sheds and swimming pools and that sort of thing. So probably, probably have a slower year than usual because of the situation that the world finds itself in. But we are starting to get, see some encouraging signs nonetheless. Thank you.
Any questions for the planner?
Yes, Roland, did you get any feedback back from any of the businesses that you send the cafe by law to?
No, nothing yet, councillor.
Thank you.
And Roland, the development permits on thirty two Clermont, thirty eight Jubilee for accessory buildings, would that be the garage and stuff you just talked about?
That's correct, worship.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, got a motion?
Second.
Moved by councillor Juan, second by deputy mayor Campbell, all those affairs by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Thank you, Roland. Five D, Fire Chief Michael Sullivan.
Evening, your worship and council. You have our report from the month of April. And does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, chief. I'm just going to read some of your report out for the public if you don't. So with the ongoing pandemic, members are practicing social distancing when possible on scenes. We have stopped responding to medical assistance calls unless requested by EHS. Members are required to wear all necessary personal protective equipment responding. Eye protection, gloves and N ninety five masks provided to every member to carry in their personal vehicle. Also, we continue to house our turnout gear in our personal vehicle. And then I also wanted to read off that we are trying to limit the amount of foot traffic in the hall for the protection of our members and the rest of the community we serve. Therefore, all used to halls been restricted, primarily one to two members of each assigned crew are completing the equipment checks each week. Thank you for those updates. We appreciate it so as a public. Any further questions for the chief?
I'd move, I'd move the fire department's report as written, your worship.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by councillor Knight, all those affairs by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Five E, Paige Clark, Marketing Communications.
Good evening, mayor and council. My report's been submitted. Are there any questions?
Let's make the comment. I'm happy to see the fire department page is going to be part of our website now. That's a overdue addition, I would say. The free online courses signed up, where they're really good ideas. Especially the Heritage Tour that we're planning on doing. One of them seems like a really good fit for that. So thank you for doing that for us. Any further questions or comments for Paige? Here, none have a motion please.
So moved. Second.
Moved by councillor Knight, second by councillor Pence, all those affairs by saying aye. Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you, Paige. Five F, Blaine Murray, Town Engineer.
Good evening, your worship and council. I have my reports submitted. Nothing too much to point out. Just like to say that our staff are back the whole course last couple of weeks and running about. You have any questions?
Yeah, I wanted to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Dan.
No, you go ahead, councillor Pence. I just wanted to read some of his report for public.
Yeah, yeah. Blaine, the only thing I was concerned about, I noticed last year, we didn't finish all the town. The cross, some of the crosswalks, all the painting wasn't done in town last year. Is it going to be done this year? Complete it?
All the painting was done, councillor. There was a crosswalk that down by the Umbridge Avenue that wasn't completed, like a a landing area, I guess, successful landing area that we didn't get finished this year or last year. I don't know if that's what you're referring to or.
So is that going to be done this year?
We can do that.
That's going to be completed this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So I just wanted to read out a couple of things regarding the COVID in the public works department. Public works not interacting the general public unless it is deemed necessary. Each instance will be reviewed on a case by case basis. All buildings that are shut down due to COVID nineteen pandemic are being inspected each week to ensure there are no visual issues. I also wanted to inform the public of the Stell Memorial Ring. Staff removed all the trophies and requested memorabilia and placed in the town halls and in the town hall now. If anyone has any memorabilia that they think that might be there, then call the town hall and see if we have it there for them. And the Veterans Memorial display, the big sign in the back, the forty foot by eight foot high sign has been taken down, it's placed on the floor and they're looking for council direction what to do with it. Does council have any ideas or suggestions? I'm wondering about the multi-sports complex, if that's an idea or not.
They have offered to take it up there if we want.
How's the rest of council feel about it?
Well, I was thinking that we would hold on to it till we see what we're doing with that piece of land. Where the ring sits.
We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to mount it. We can just put it up there and just hold it.
Oh, we can store it up there. That would be good. Yeah.
The memorial won't be, I just wanted to add, the memorial is not designed for outdoor use. I think it'll, it's kind of paid, so.
Could be in case, though, if we wanted to, I suppose.
Possibly, yeah.
Be something that we'll have to look at.
We can store it for now and until we figure it out, that's great.
Yeah.
Right.
Any direction there, I think, Blaine?
Yeah, it may have to be dismantled to get it out. That's the only problem. And to drop it.
Hopefully the Zamboni door might be big enough.
It'll fit out it, but it's forty feet long too, and it's extremely heavy and awkward. And I'll have to get on a flatbed. It's long enough to carry it, I guess, so.
And if we do decide to hang on at the multi-sports complex, will we need some engineered drawings before we do that?
Oh, you'd have, yes, it's extremely heavy. You'd have to have a support structure to hold it, for sure.
Okay.
I don't know if the door is big enough to get in the soccer complex with it. I don't know how.
It's a gradual, Blaine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions for the engineer on the report?
Yeah, I have one more thing there, Blaine. I was going to mention to you, remember last year we talked about the parking stalls on Ford Street? Have we done any more on that?
The trap, yeah, the parking plan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all ready for council to review whenever they want to review it.
Okay.
In the committee of the hall?
It could be done. Well, you're going to have to sit around and look at it.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got to put that on.
It's not, it's not. Yeah, you're going to have to, I think Susan can tell us a little more exactly what we have to do there for approval, but it has to be reviewed.
It has to be reviewed, yes, and.
There's three or four plans that have to be set down. Everybody has to look at and explain it. I don't know how you'd be able to do it in the committee of the hall.
Not virtually. It would be very difficult to do it virtually, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Any further question, the public works reports?
I move the reports as written, your worship.
I'll second.
Moved by councillor Pence, seconded by deputy mayor Campbell. On the question, I said a question with the water report. For the break in Mackenzie Lane, do we have to bring up some payment for that one, Blaine?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Just wanted to mention to the Joe Lane has been appointed the overall direct responsible charge for the water treatment plant. And there's a vacancy now in the water treatment plant and job posting was created. He wants to congratulate Joe on the new position. With that said, all those affairs by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you, Blaine. Five G, Sally O'Neil, active Pixel County. There she is.
Good evening, your worship and council. I just wanted to begin by saying thank you very much for inviting me to join you at the council meeting. And I have submitted my report. I'm wondering if you might have any questions about that. And I have a couple of things to update as well. So I'll, I'll open it up for questions first.
Any questions? I just wanted to note that the daily dose of nature post on Facebook reviewed by thousands of people. That's great, great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. That is. That is actually being, that will be featured actually in by Recreation Nova Scotia in their, in their upcoming provincial newsletter as a success story. So we're pretty excited about that.
Awesome.
I have a couple of additions to the things that, that a lot's happened in a week since I submitted this, so I just have a couple of things to update you on. One is that the partnership with Dream Candy to provide an eight-week leadership program is beginning on the eighteenth. And we have, we had set a limit of ten students. And we are up to eight right now, and those were, those participants were directly contacted through service providers. So Schools Plus recommended people and Dream Candy as well. So we work directly with service providers to make sure that, that those spots went to kids that were most in need. And so that's a really exciting program because we are doing it virtually. And this is a new thing for us both, but it will be hopefully a template for more programs to happen in that way. And so it does include, it does include recreation programming, leadership skills, healthy practices, healthy eating, and physical activity as kind of integrated in through the program. And it has direct contact from the leader. So you'll be, so participants will get a weekly actual phone call with their leader. And so for folks, because we were, we were concerned that not everyone has access to the internet. So we use a package of materials that are delivered to the child's home and a combination of video and personal calls on the phone. I did want to bring to your attention that Highland Connect, which the town of Stellerton, among all the municipalities in Picto County, has records on Highland Connect. It's, if you're not familiar with it, it's a searchable database. And it's used province-wide. It's a, it's for recreation, physical activity opportunities. So your facilities would be in there, all your parks would be in there, all your trails, all your ball clubs and bike groups, all of those opportunities in your community. Nova Scotia Connect has included information on their, on all the sites that make it searchable by, by COVID resources. So families who are looking for opportunities under the state of emergency can search by stay-home resources, fitness, outdoor. And so provincially, they have asked that, that communities update their records. So I don't know how long it's been since Stellerton has opened up those records and made sure they're up to date. But I'm interested in working with, with your staff to make sure that those updates are made. As we know, that people are searching for things like that right now specifically.
Thank you, Sally. I do know that I did go into the Highland Connect site in November and did some updating at that time as well, so.
Super. That's great. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that annually, we've had, we've held Bike Week in Picto County. And the town of Stellerton has had representation on that planning committee and been a big part of, a big partner in that event. We have decided that we're still going to do it. So the MPALS have met and we're reaching out now to our committee. Gina was, yeah, Marky was on our committee last year, and so we would like to invite her back. And so what we're planning is to do an info sharing. It will be a virtual Bike Week. We'll have sample itineraries, suggested routes through each community, contests, information sharing, but, and connecting virtually. So we're kind of excited about that.
Sounds great. Thank you. Just wanted to mention the eight-week leadership program for adolescent girls. I think that's a really good idea to go to service providers and find the candidates for it. Because the service, the service providers always know who needs to help the most. So that's a good, I think it's a good idea.
And they have direct, yeah, they have direct connection. I do want to make one little correction to that in that we did say, although the main target is adolescent girls, we have suggested that it's, like our poster says to any, anyone. So we are accepting anyone. We expect that the nature of the program itself will be most attractive to girls, but any female identified person or anyone who's just interested in doing that kind of leadership program is invited to attend. So it's not necessarily specifically girls, although we hope by nature that we serve girls through it. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Any further, is there any questions for Sally? Okay, thank you, guys. A motion to accept the report, please.
So move.
So I think that was moved by Councilor Knight, seconded by Councilor Pence, all those in favor saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you very much, Sally. Appreciate your work. Five H is a homecoming update from Councilor Knight.
Thank you, your worship. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to read off the report. Festivals require advanced planning. I would like to thank all those who volunteered, giving up their time, dedicating to providing enjoyment, the residents and visitors of and to Picto County. Also, the businesses and organizations for their valued contribution. Thank you to co-chair, councillor Gary Pence. All who contribute to Stellerton homecoming tradition. It was a pleasure working with the committee. Organizations like our RCA F Lions Legion and Fire Department receive a financial boost which they pass on. Many look forward to homecoming. Friends, relatives make our festival a time to visit. An occasion where we renew old friendships while catching up on lost family time. To ensure the safety of our attendees at the Saturday night dance, we brought back the Chad Bus, which would be held in the Sobeys Soccer Complex. Last year, we introduced fifties and sixties music at the Legion. This year, Family Day was moved to Wednesday, with Saturday spot filled by Family Sports Day. This is a new event comprised of soap hockey and soap basketball. We added Sunday afternoon music in the park. Bands were booked, security, security administered by Chief Mark Holback, backed by Security Company. Fire Chief Mike Sullivan was overseeing fire regulations as well as the department's participation. Chief Holback and his wife Cara would take on the trivia night at the RCA F. Dream Candy was taking charge of the pre-teen dance. The Friday night car show was in place, anticipating a huge turnout. Paul Taylor booked nine food trucks. The RCA Association retained seniors lunch along with their delicious pork chop barbecue. Not to forget their annual golf tournament. Sunday morning, Saturday morning gave way to our firefighters' famous pancake breakfast with the firefighters' competition scheduled during the week. Lunches were planned by Christ Anglican and Stellerton Presbyterian Church. Church service Sunday and Graveside service at Lord's Cemetery. Twenty twenty school reunion to be held at the Nova Scotia Community College. We would open Wednesday with the mayor's concert in the Allen Park, closing Sunday night with the final fireworks, this year to be put on by local firefighters. Paige Clark was in early stages of contacting sponsors new and old. This year, Paige had a new donation, a nice donation from the Kinsman Club. Paige was in the process of laying out a promotion and advertisement campaign. Then COVID nineteen took precedence. Our committee, our, our homecoming committee was looking forward to this year's event, anticipating a great experience. So it is with great disappointment, I must announce, twenty twenty homecoming is canceled. We feel the health and safety of citizens take priority. Thank you again to our committee, sponsors and organizations. We will see you next year. Be safe in twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Knight. That's very sad news, but the circumstances, I guess, have forced the committee's hand on that. Any comments or questions for Councilor Knight?
No, just want to say thank you very much, Councilor Knight and the whole committee. I've been on the committee before and it's a lot of work and it's a sad day when we're not going to have the that homecoming in Stellerton. A lot of people comes home for this event specifically. I don't know if anybody will be traveling soon, but it's a sad day. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. I think the entire council agrees with that sentiment. It's a sad day, but we want to thank Councilor Knight and the entire committee for all their work. Item five, aye, Davis Day, Councilor Pence.
Yes, your worship and council, I have some more bad news. Davy's Day Memorial, I think it is June the eleventh. It's canceled this year due to the COVID nineteen. And it's with deep regret that we have to cancel it, but it's a sign of the times.
Yes, again, it's sad that we have to do that, but like you say, the things are going on. The world, we don't have much of a choice. And thank you for your work on that committee as well, Councilor Pence. Okay, so I think we can move on to item six, correspondence. Six A Real Canadian Recreation, and thank you for donation.
Yes, the town of Stellerton donated through two hundred dollars to Real Canadian Recreation. And that was under the two thousand nineteen twenty annual grant budget.
Thank you to Tyson for carrying out that project. I think it's very valuable for the, for the veterans and for him to take the initiative and lead us from that. We're happy to support it. And six B?
Yes, this is from the Office of the Attorney General and Minister of Justice. Over the past month, some public sector bodies have shared concerns about capacity to meet their obligations under the Accessibility Act, given the impact of the current COVID nineteen situation. The Government of Nova Scotia prescribed municipalities as public sector bodies under the Accessibility Act effective April first, twenty twenty. Under the act, public sector bodies are required to form an accessibility advisory committee and develop an accessibility plan within one year of prescription date. Please be assured that they recognize the unprecedented challenges facing all Nova Scotians during this time. They will be adjusting the timelines for public sector bodies to ensure that there is sufficient time and capacity to support the development of our accessibility plans. And they will share further details on the revised timelines once the state of emergency has ended. And they can't, they think, they thank us for our continued support and commitment to building an inclusive province for all Nova Scotians. And just so the public and council are aware, we do have an accessibility advisory committee that has been established. And we are in the process of developing a accessibility plan for the town of Stellerton, which is due or was due April first, twenty twenty-one. But now with this, we're going to see when that is due, but just rest assured that that is being worked on.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you mean a motion to accept the correspondence? Are we okay?
For information, yes.
So a motion or no?
Yeah, sorry, a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilor Pence, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell, all those in favor saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most carried, thank you. Item seven, committee of the hall report.
The following recommendations are for council's consideration from the Committee of the Hall meeting held virtually on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Recommendation number one. On recommendation of Committee of the Hall, council approved the tender received from SW Week's Construction for asphalt patching for the amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five. That is including HST.
We discuss as the committees or kind of motion, unless there's any issues.
So move.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Simon.
Move by Councilor Knight, seconded by Councilor Juan, all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most carried, thank you. Item A is a resolution.
So this is a resolution number twenty twenty dash zero five dash eleven, and it's for the application that the town of Stellerton will submit under the Provincial Capital Assistance Program, otherwise known as PCAP. So be it resolved that the town, town council of the town of Stellerton, that the town clerk and town engineer be authorized to submit an application for projects under the Provincial Capital Assistance Program for the following project in phases for the fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one. Number one is the Rundle Street, Victoria and Allen Avenue Infrastructure Renewal Project, subject to the Provincial Capital Assistance Program, and that is for one million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
We discussed this, got a motion?
Yeah, I move, I so move.
I second.
Thank you, move by Councilor Pence, seconded by Councilor Juan, there's no further discussion, all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you.
If, if I may, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Brenda. I'd like to recommend to council that in the event that the PCAP funding is not approved, that council approve Rundle Street on its own. And if so, in so doing, the sewer portion of the project for Rundle Street own would be funded by gas tax and the water portion would be funded by depreciation.
Well, could we make, your worship, could I make that part of the original motion?
No, because this that PCAP resolution will have to go to the province. This is something.
I move.
I'll second it, Simon.
So move by Councilor Juan, seconded by Councilor Pence. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you, Brenda, for that clarification and input.
Yeah, thanks, Brenda. Do we have to make a motion on the second part?
We did.
I think we're good.
Just want to be clear.
Absolutely.
So now we're ready to move on to the applications for a site plan approval, PQ Property, twenty-five Bunker Hill.
Yes, so council had a public hearing today that began a little late, at five twenty-five. And so in front of them is the approval for their consideration for twenty-five Bunker Hill to develop a four-unit townhouse development.
Okay, so we've already had the discussion. Are we ready to go straight to a vote or?
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor of the development signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
So we have three to one. The yay was Councilor Juan, and the motion is defeated. We can move on to a COVID nineteen property tax financing.
Yes, so this is something that I would like council to approve in principle. This is a policy that is being developed by the province, or I say by the whole province municipalities. So basically, in order to qualify for a low-interest provincial loan to cover expenses, municipalities have to approve a policy allowing people up to thirty months to pay this current year's tax levy. Many people obviously have taken a financial hit during the pandemic. And however, the municipality still needs tax revenue to pay for services. We still have fire, we still have police, we still have garbage collection, exactly. This is a tax financing program. It is not tax forgiveness or deferral. The Provincial Association of Municipal Administrators and the Federation of Municipalities, Nova Scotia, recommended a draft policy, which is before you, that would allow people up to thirty months to pay under certain conditions. And some, one condition, for example, is that the, the property, commercial or residential, has to be currently in good standing with the town. Only those who can prove that their income has been affected by COVID nineteen would qualify. Residential properties would only be included if they have a dwelling on them, and commercial property owners would have to prove they were not covered by. by business interruption insurance or any of the programs that are offered by the federal government. Nova Scotia residents, as, as I mentioned, who taxes are not in arrears, would, would qualify. Under the proposal, taxpayers would be charged interest at the municipality's cost of borrowing, which is 1.1%, very, very low rate, plus an additional amount to cover administration of the program. It should be emphasized that residents who can pay should do so to limit the amount of borrowing needed. It is a, it is a policy that the municipalities within Picto County are working together. The finance staff from each municipality are working together to kind of make it fair. We don't want one thing being offered in one municipality in Picto County and not being offered in another. But this is not something I'm asking council to pass tonight. You need seven days' notice on a final policy. It's just something I want council to accept in principle, that yes, if somebody is affected by this COVID-19 and is unable to pay their current year taxes, that we can, we can offer them this, this, this program, this financing.
I think it's a great program, Susan.
Yes, it is a very good program, and the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities have been meeting virtually since April the 1st, and this has been a very big topic on their agenda, and people, they've been working with the province and they've worked very, very hard to come up with something that would help the municipalities as well as, as well as people who are affected by the COVID-19 pandemic.
So you want us to?
I'm just, it's just a consensus tonight at councillor Pence, so what, what will happen is if council approves this in principle, once the finance staff have come together with a more final policy that reflects the municipalities within Picto County, this will go to council with a seven-day, well, more than a seven-day notice that council can or cannot consider in June.
All right. What do you think, your worship?
I think it sounds good. I think it's important that Picto County especially has the same, the same policy across six units, if at all possible.
Yeah, that's what I like about it.
Yeah.
Me too, and the clerk and the, and their finance staff are working on that, so I think we can, I'm gonna go with approving in principle at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. I approve, yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Yep.
And so councillor Lwan say yes, I think we're all good with it.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So as soon as that policy is drafted, I will send to council for their consideration.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next item?
Yes, number 11 on the agenda is the bids received for Stell- New Stellerton Memorial Rink. So as per the email sent to council on April 22nd, council approved approaching local rinks to see if they were interested in anything from the Stellerton Memorial Rink before going public. And those items that are before you are what was presented, and I can certainly share that with the public here once I get it up. But yeah, I'm not sure if there's any questions here. Blaine, the town engineer, met with, met with them, and that's the bids that came forward.
The items we had were rubber mats and ice edger. There we go.
Yeah. Set of exit doors, nets, net mesh with bumpers and Venray chairs. So as you can see here, I apologize that it's not, but this is, this is as good as it's gonna get. So the Hector Arena, they have bid $300 on rubber mats. The Thorburn Arena bet, sorry, bid 501. With regards to the ice edger, the Thorburn Arena bid 251, and the Westville bid 400. The set of exit doors looks like we are with the Westville at 400. The nets, Thorburn 1202, Trenton Arena 1,000. Net mesh with bumpers is Trenton Arena 200, and Venray chairs, Trenton Arena 100.
What's a Venray chair?
Just the, the plastic chairs that are in the, they're in the.
Oh, so there's a number of them.
There's just, I'm not sure, Blaine, if you can let me know how many there are for $100. I'm not sure.
They were looking for 50.
50 chairs, okay, thank you.
So those are just, I just like to add, these are some of the, just the smaller items that are in there, and there's other, we have a used equipment tender out for sale, which some of the bigger items like Zamboni and the glass are in that, so that's separate from this.
Thanks for that clarification. I think it's pretty straightforward, the bidding, it looks like we just take the high bidder, he's a bidder on, then we can. I think it's straightforward. Anyone that have any problems with what's on the sheet there?
No, I make a motion, we go with the, give it to the highest bidder.
Okay.
May I ask a quick question?
Just wait till I get a second, or do I have a second there?
Yeah, I seconded Danny.
Okay, moved by councillor Knight, seconded by councillor Pence. Go ahead, Sally.
Were there helmets or community lending equipment for community borrowing?
There was helmets there, I know that.
There's a, there's a hockey bag called Used Helmets up there. I don't know if they're expired or what.
So I'd like to talk to somebody with that at a later time, because we are, as a, as a community, all the recreation departments looking at a, an equipment loan program. So those might be put to good use.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you, Sally.
Yeah, there was, the helmets there, Blaine, were there for the use when people were coming skating and they didn't have a helmet?
Yeah.
They were owned by the rink.
There is some minor hockey equipment up there, too. I don't know what the, if there's anything of use up there.
Well, maybe Sally, you could take Sally in there, Blaine, let her have a look at this equipment.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on the question? Okay, all those affairs, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary minded. Most carried Nancy, thank you very much. Next council meeting is Monday, June 8th. It's gonna be virtual again via Zoom at 5:30 PM, so we'll see you again then, and a kind of motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you councillor Pence.